Just the you, do you have? You can think of.
Well, the floodplain could be a challenge. We've talked with our floodplain administrator and she thinks we need to raise the lot two feet.
Okay.
At least on the south end. We haven't, haven't shot it yet.
Okay.
We are going to have to raise the level of the lot.
Good to know. Okay. Uh, we just helped Ekalaka with the new hospital. It's been up about two years now and it's in the floodplain, so we had to bring that up two feet. And what do they do that? So, our McCorv engineers had just replatted the floodplain and eked it into that area that we did at the hospital, so we did have to bring it out. About what else?
Building availability would be a big one.
Yeah.
Melody's got us on live now.
Okay. Nice.
On Facebook.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're being late again.
Yeah, so that comes into what are the, what are the building systems? Are we a pre-engineered metal building, wood frame? You know, those different options that we'll definitely pursue and look at. I think it's been talked about doing a pre-engineered metal building to get started. So there was definitely, for a clear span, large building, that's a great opportunity. Um, I think the pre-engineered metal building timelines have dropped back down. Um, once wood hit the ceiling, then everybody switched to pre-engineered metal building during COVID. They got backlogged and so I think now everything's starting to settle back down a little bit. So from what we're seeing, so still probably a, a great option to do that. Yeah. Good. Other challenges?
Um, I guess, like, I don't know if I'm answering this question quite right, but like currently, storage is a pretty major challenge, I think, for a lot of our departments. Adequate storage. Um, one of the other things that I think about with this building that could be a challenge is particularly for the health department, we're a very public building. There's a lot of members of the public coming in and out of our particular section of it. And so just making sure that that's from, you know, sort of an exterior standpoint, safe, easy parking, that kind of thing.
Good. Yeah, and so we'll talk, you know, how many parking spaces would you require?
Yeah.
We have the, the code that tells us a zoning code. Um, I'm not sure, sure if the city of Shoto has a zoning code for parking. Can we figure that out?
If I can give you, for instance, well, we're across the alley from where this building, we're hoping will be put to the west. There's an area roughly the same size as the building that we're thinking will be all parking lot.
Okay.
So, I mean, there should be adequate, uh, parking.
Okay, good.
Is it on the left side?
Correct, correct.
I think long-term with this building, the fluency of everybody that occupies it, because it is our emergency operations center for disaster and emergency services. So you might want to put that there involved too. But in the case that is actually used as an emergency operations center, that it doesn't affect the health department and their daily work, the ambulance and then the sheriff's office. So just the fluency of the whole building really needs to be in consideration that on a packed day, on a bad day.
Right.
Let's make sure that it works.
Well, and also that the public are not interrupting.
Yeah, exactly.
Good. What else? Other thoughts, challenges? We can always come back to it. So, and other, other, we'll spark this and we'll flip back to them. All that. So with that, uh, let's go to what are the givens? So Seth, if you want to just flip, we'll go to a new sheet. And let's talk about the givens. We know we have DOC, we have a DES office, we have the sheriff bay with a morgue in there. Uh, we have the health department, ambulance, and the search and rescue. Those are the kind of the key components of that. So we know we have those divisions. Is there a need to create flex space for a future use? Is there any other uses in the county that, that should, that should come in? That you're not thinking of, or if you had a crystal ball, what would it be in the future? You should have not thought of it.
If you knew what your economy was going to do with that larger area, we'd set that for soup kitchens.
Okay, yeah.
I wondered when that was coming.
Yeah, exactly.
I knew it was coming. It's a no win.
Yeah.
I, I guess part of it is if we get an influx of housing and what the, all of a sudden Shoto becomes 8,000 people and, and the county becomes 40,000 people.
Right.
You know? But that may never happen.
Not in my lifetime.
I hope not.
That's why you're here, right?
Yeah, yeah. But that always kind of comes to my mind.
Yeah.
You, you build things for today and tomorrow it's too small.
Right.
With the, with the Sentinel program that's coming, I, what I understand is that workers for that will be bused from Great Falls and there won't be man camps here. Is that correct? The Sentinel program with the missiles?
Oh, yeah, I think they're going to buss them back and forth.
Okay, yeah. I know in Lewis Town, they're talking about man camps and how that's going to impact their community, so just.
I just hadn't heard that name.
Gotcha.
Sentinel?
I'm not reading.
Other givens. I think this is where we probably put in our mechanical systems. Some of those are long lead times and so just making sure. Ethan and I are on Friday together and Shelby, where we converted the shopco and Shelby to a new health clinic. And that air handler was supposed to be here in August. Um, so they could move in by the end of December. Uh, they set the air handler Monday. So nearly, about nine months, I guess, delayed on that. So there's those items that we're wrestling with. And so the idea is, is that for a mechanical system, we have a series of systems that run this building, so it can be zoned separately. That's something to consider and take in mind. We know the morgue will have its own system for sure, too.
I'm assuming there's like shared cost with utilities that are going to happen with this building? We're not going to do individual metering for electrical services, so, you know, it'll all be one?
For sure.
And, and we did, I mean, with the city, uh, on hookups.
Okay.
Uh, they figured one sewer hookup and one water. We also talked to Northwest Energy about burying the lines and getting rid of the power poles in the alley where the building would be.
Okay.
And the water and sewer infrastructure is right there. I think we, right, we had talked about that.
Yeah.
Good. Other givens?
Other things I think about with a shared building like this is kind of who's, who's staffing what and who has access to what people stuff, I guess. And if it's going to be something where we need to work with the floor plan and work with the systems so that only certain people can get into the ambulance bay or, you know, the search and rescue portion. How, how does that happen? How does that function? Because that plays a lot into how the building kind of gets designed and can just impact that as well.
A lot of doors and a lot of keypads.
I mean, I imagine the health department would be pretty sensitive with records and, yeah.
Uh, I do, with reference to the storage, what we've looked at is a building that's 18 or 20 foot walls so that the upper level can be storage for the different, uh, groups.
Right.
And that way, they can be locked and that department only has the keys or whatever.
Right. Yeah, and I made some notes on your plan as we get to it, talking about adding an extra stair. Uh, because it gets to be a pretty huge space beyond our exiting distance, if you will. And so I jotted in where another stair could be, um, just those kind of things. So we'll go through that too, just kind of look at those options. Yes, storage is key. That's, the engineers want too big of a mechanical room and then always, just kidding.
But it's still not big enough.
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah. And storage, those are the, the big things. We always wish we had more, so. Good. Any other givens? We can always come back to as well. So with that, um, just talking about goals and objectives. What are the primary drivers, um, other than you just need the space? The time has come. Uh, just driving down the alley, search and rescue equipment looks like it sits outside, so just getting that undercover. Ambulance is out and over there at.
They're in a garage back behind the hospital.
Okay, yeah, and getting their own home.
Yeah.
As well, so. And the training space? Training, training and meeting space, so. What else? What are other, any other drivers?
Um, I mean, I think for the health department, we're just, we're in a very tight space right now and have a lot of office sharing going on, which makes it really challenging to protect patient confidentiality. So I think that's a pretty major driver for us.
Uh, next question, just impacted the existing site. So, um, other than the floodplain, I guess, uh, just getting services to it. Should be pretty straightforward to build it.
Uh, the county owns the land.
Yeah.
It's access to the majority of the county facilities. So, I mean, it would, it would work pretty well for keeping it consolidated.
Yeah. Yep. And as we talked about, existing infrastructure, you've already done your homework on that, so. Sounds like the hookups to the city are good, Northwestern Energy is good.
Yeah, uh, yes, we, we did have a previous meeting with the city.
Okay.
They were on board, so.
Good.
It's more money in their pocket.
And then just talk about, uh, future flexibility. Would there be a need for expansion? How do we do that? Which way does it grow, um, the building, if we wanted to make that addition? Is there a need to adapt it to the soup kitchen, for example? You know, how does that, how does that work? Um, and just those, those kind of things. But just making sure that we have in our minds, what is the future growth potential? So that when there are 40,000 more people here, or, you know, what that means, so, but not right now. And then what are the showstoppers? So we always want to talk about what could delay the project, what could stop the project.
Costs too much.
Yep, exactly. I mean, that's usually the number one is just how do we mitigate that? So that we don't have that, that concern, or what do we have to do to, to do that? Uh, if you want to do showstoppers, just cost.
Sure.
Any others? General consensus of the public, um, are they on board with the idea?
Well, we haven't had a tremendous amount of, uh, blowback.
Okay.
Because with the funding that we do have, it's not going on to the taxpayers.
Sure.
Payment schedule.
Yep, good.
And that's why, that's the reason for trying to get it accomplished.
Sure. Good, okay.
I think we do have a deadline for how to use that CARES money. I think we have to have us completed this at December 31st to 26th, I think.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, and that should be plenty doable.
Yeah.
Do you have to be contracted or does that have to be completed?
I think the funds have to be spent, spent, yeah, they need to be completed.
Okay.
But, you know, we can always schmooze if we have to, but I hope, you know, two and a half years will.
Three and a half years.
Yeah.
Good. Any other showstoppers?
Because one of the things I'm thinking about is like, if we start phasing this project, I guess, if there's, you know, certain, um, different parts of this building that, you know, maybe something gets shrunk, you know, the whole space doesn't get finished. If there's, you know, minimum three ambulance space, right? I mean, we have to have that minimum of, you know, enough, this large space for the morgue. Trying to understand if, if, you know, budget does start becoming a concern, if there's things that can shrink and there's services that can be maybe planned for future or provided in the future. That's kind of how we want to also kind of think of it. Because from, from my side as well, you know, we, we plan for, you know, building being finished out fully, but there are provisions where we can do stuff like, you know, shelling a portion of the building that gets finished out later, that saves you a lot of costs upfront now. But down the road, once you can raise that funds, then you can actually finish that out. We can help identify that, if there's portions that don't necessarily have to go right now into this building, but can kind of get moved in later, if that makes sense?
Yes, kind of in our perception, um, what our thought process was, was the existing building or the metal building, uh, with what they offer for features, but having everything, uh, to scale or to, to, uh, dimensions and have the windows in the walls where there's supposed to be, uh, finish the inside with wood, okay? But make sure that if we have floor heat, that all the sections and the segments are run. We know where they're at, uh, they're in the concrete. All the water lines, all the, the sewer system is all done and it can be buttoned up, because you can always work on the inside.
Yep. Yeah, and I'll show you coming up what we did for Garfield County, that same thing. So it's, phase one is just getting finished. And they're hoping to do phase two, which is the rest of the interior fit out in the next year or two. So kind of the same idea. Good, okay. And we've pretty much gone through your project goals pretty well. Just looking at, I guess, some of the goals and objectives of the site, uh, site survey, which daily we'll have, we'll do that. Uh, geotech, if there's been a report done yet. If not, it's one thing to get started on, just to make sure we know what's upgrade. And that the, the building will stay level and keep standing, um, as that, as that time comes. Um, and then just the infrastructure updates as well. Um, again, I think the big one in this, kind of site accommodate requirements based on, as you've talked about, parking can just happen to the west of it, so that's.
I mean, it should be adequate, because it's virtually the same size as what the building would be.
Right. Good. Um, and we've got that picked already, so that's good. And then sustainability, we always want to talk about what are those common sense things that we can do that's going to help the energy efficiency of the building down the road? Is the opportunity oriented at east-west axis? Maybe provide some solar panels on it, PB arrays, always help supplement the best that we can. Uh, wind patterns, so I grew up in northeastern Montana, um, I'm very accustomed to wind. I didn't know snow fell straight down until I got to school in Bozeman. And so, and, and you have wind here too, coming off the front. Um, and so just really, what are those pieces that we really need? Uh, we are very mindful of our door swings, even in wind country. So we want to push against the wind, open the door, not into it and rip your arm off when you open the door. So we want to just be mindful of those things. And then we also, we're always looking for recycled, repurposed, is, is an option too. Keeps the cost down, um, or at least post-consumer, those kind of things. And so just being mindful and common sense approach to that. We've talked a lot about site already, so I think we've got a pretty good handle on our site goals. Uh, what we need. So looking at the, at the site, um, let me know if this is not right or for adjustments.
Right, where the sheriff's office is just.
Straight south.
Oh, it's in here. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We're thinking you're going to grab where the piles are.
Railroad would probably get mad at us.
It'll be quiet.
I think that's where I told you, so that's my fault.
Oh, no, that's fine. And so, is there, um, is there any railroad setback concerns we need to know about?
And we do have the survey of everything.
Okay. Good, yeah, so we'll just stay out of that. Um, it's not MRL, is it? Montana Rail Link?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it'd be NSF now, they bought everything. Yeah, so we have a couple of projects where we've worked with, um, Montana Rail Link and I'll be NSF, where it takes about a year to get anything from them.
If you can get anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll just stay clear. If you've got that survey, that's great.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Well, with that in mind then, so where the search and rescue vehicles are sitting?
That's where it goes.
Is where it would, would go.
Correct.
And then for the parking, would that happen here?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, in that lower left-hand corner of that log.
That's the garage there.
That will be gone too.
This will go away?
Yes.
So are you thinking it would want to sit here or most closer to the annex?
Closer to the street.
It sits further south.
Yeah, as far south as it can.
Go, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
More or less, yeah. And give the space in between the sheriff's office in case they ever need to.
Yeah, that was a concern, that Keith wanted to keep, he parks on the south side of the sheriff's office, so he wanted to keep as much area on the south side of this building as he could between the buildings.
Okay. Good, so we'll, yeah, we'll get that adjusted. So then, uh, we took this, uh, program, or this sketch and wrote a program based on the square footages. Sheriff, if you can just pass a few to me. It really started to hone in on what are those square footages, um, what are those needs? Knowing that we have to, we'll probably need to adjust those a little bit. And so you'll see that that square footage is 12,865, eight, or 55. And so we broke it apart into the different departments. And that does two things, that starts to create those separations that we possibly could need. But at 12,000 square feet, we need a fire sprinkler. And so, I mean, we're already in a fire alarm size already. And so those two things, we just need to be cognizant of, if we maintain it. This does not show that second level of storage, so that square footage is going to grow even higher. Um, it's what's on right now.
We talked about that, we brought up this one, that we probably needed that.
And there are potential, and we'll do this, once we get into a full code analysis, um, we can do what's called firewalls and create compartmentalization, which may reduce or not even need a fire sprinkler, um, to do that. And so it's just really a given task of what we want to do. Fire sprinkler may help on the county's insurance costs to have that in there as an, as an option. And so just those, those things would be the next steps is just a good program. Um, and so these square footages are purely, uh, come off the plan that was provided. Again, just knowing that they'll may have to adjust here and there a little bit to get that size. We add a little 10% in there for the walls and that fluctuates between five and 10%, but it's best to be conservative now with those numbers and then work together as, as a group to, to get that down where needed. But I think in just walking through, uh, the health department, you can see it's 2,203 square feet. Sheriff's area is 1,310 square feet, that includes that bay and the morgue. Search and rescue, 2,360, also a bay, training area. Uh, DOC is 2,947. Ambulance, 2,541. And then all the others, so just those support spaces and all that, it's kind of made up the rest, is 1,494. So that total, which includes those, kind of those two corridors in there, um, you'll see, I'll get the next slide as the plan, that's just a little bit of code work on that. That includes those corridors in there and that number is going to grow just a little bit. And so whether we grow the building to capture that space that we've taken over with the corridors or if we just shrink some of the other sizes and try to sit under that 12,000 mark. So with that, really didn't touch a lot of the plan. We didn't want to until we had the chance, just really visit and, and talk through it. But, uh, one thing you'll see is this corridor, we have to exit people out of this. And so, uh, a code rule is that you can't exit one space into another space and then outside. So we've got to create a pathway for people. And so just taking your existing plan, one of the easiest and best ways to do that would be to just to create a corridor through here and a corridor through here. And then you've got a good separation already, so, um, pretty much it already started with a good separation. And whether we just grow that width a little bit to move the maintenance, EMS, training storage to one side or the other of that corridor. And again, corridor just has to be five feet, uh, wide on this space, because there's plenty of capacity based on the use to do that. But anything else we kind of left, um, as you've got it to get started, just a couple of things. Uh, entries, we need four feet between when a door opens and you get to the next door. And that reason is so if somebody's in a wheelchair, they've got a spot to stop and then push the next door open or pull it whenever they're coming in. And so that's, that'll grow in your DOC a little bit, uh, that way. But other than that, um, I mean, good, good plans. There's probably some ADA stuff, we'll just have to finesse a little bit to make sure we'll get that rolling there to show as well. Um, if you're a search and rescue group, if they want a place to, um, I'll show you coming up, we did a Lewis Park County search and rescue. And so for example, their scuba gear, they've got a big room. It's actually just a wide open shower and a toilet, so they can come in, spray down, uh, scuba gear and then strip down and change after they've showered, so those kind of things, um, just to be thinking of.
And I don't think that's the final plan we came up with, this is.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Which doesn't change a whole lot, other than where you're talking about kind of that washroom there area.
Okay.
So.
No, that's good.
It's a little bit different, kind of over there where that corridor is, a little bit, so.
Thank you. Yeah, and, uh, just from, and again, it's our job to help facilitate and we're going to use our experience, our code experience to, to help you get what you need. And so just working through that, um, that's the only real major pieces. We saw like some offices, maybe we make them all the same size, but that'd be a few on your, on your side of your apartment as well. Ambulances, uh, I think these are 12, if that's what that says, 12 foot wide doors. So we'll maybe do usually 12 by 12s on those doors for the ambulances. Unless you're thinking about getting a big two-ton international at some point, then we'll go there.
Those are way too rough.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so you're probably going to be 450, 550s, uh, Fords or Dodges or whatever you have, yeah.
Dodgers prefer.
Yeah. Um, and then search and rescue, uh, again, if that's enough, get all that equipment in. If you can get it all out quickly, um, that's a thing. Or does that need to grow just a little bit to get a little wider, uh, to get?
It's not enough for them, but that's what they're going to get.
Okay.
You know, the house, uh, in, in the past, they really haven't had a location to keep everything. And we're thinking more of the smaller items, APVs or whatever. The other equipment, you know, could probably be put in the culvert area.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're made for the bus.
It's all, it's still all up in the air. Sure. But at least it, it's an emergency system. That's what we're looking for in the building. And at least they have a spot for training or, and some storage.
Okay. Good. Yeah, I took the bus to be the command center at the multiple command center. Yeah, um, and so really, again, we didn't, uh, change as much at all with just the square footages. And as I mentioned, we might just finesse that a little bit, um, based on your comfort level of the cost. And we talked about that slide coming up. But also just in the size of what's required for a fire sprinkler.
And I, I don't know if, if you've included it, but we do need a generator uh, for alternative juice, because if there is, God forbid, a disaster or whatever, if we can use this for the center.
Yep.
And so, I mean, there, there has to be the electricity, there has to be the, the, uh, access to, uh, radios, all of that in this building too.
Right. Yeah, and that would just, we jump back to you. The site, um, would that generator, uh, Sheriff, do you have a generator on your facility?
It's across the alley from our office.
Okay. So yeah, so it on its own standalone, just outside. Uh, we like to use diesel, um, rather than natural gas, just so that, you know, the gas lines break, tanks turn dry. But in the event that it's something real bad, local ranchers, you know, you could someone's a call. People can bring in a few gallons of diesel, hopefully. Um, so that's.
Diesel gets old. We had a diesel generator and it had additive all the time. And it might, it sat there for fifteen years and never had, it was never freshened up.
Oh, yeah.
And so that's why we went to natural gas, because it's always fresh, it's always there, it's.
Right.
Clean and, so that's a discussion.
Right. Yep, absolutely. Now that, um, they do their startups, at least once a week.
As that one, as that did before.
Okay.
Didn't, didn't use enough to.
Sure.
He had a hundred and fifty gallon tank and it was there for twenty years and never got needed.
We'll just trade it out with the road department, Keith.
Give you guys the bad stuff.
Yeah, so with that, I thought we could just jump into, so, uh, this is Big Horn County ambulance in Harden. This project is just finishing. It is a small project. It's six thousand three hundred and thirty-four square feet. Its final cost, two thousand, two million ninety-four, uh, thousand on that one. And so, uh, it's three hundred and thirty dollars a square foot. And the reason why this one is a little bit large is because it's got three living component in it. Uh, this is a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five facility, small training room, offices here, um, and then of course a locker room, um, there. So it's a very compact building, but very, uh, very tight. Um, so this is what it looks like right now. Actually, these are a little bit older, older photos. It's just been painted, and we'll turn it over here, uh, soon to the county.
So much better than what they had though.
Yeah. Yeah, the one there, there, it's in rough shape right now, the one over here. Um, this is the Garfield County, this is in Jordan, so eight thousand one hundred and six square feet. More similar to what, uh, you're looking for. This is a pre-engineered metal building, uh, came from Butler. So this is Butler pre-manufactured. Same thing, the county got a D L A grant, uh, for this, so they had to have it constructed by June of next year. I think it got extended. So you're talking about funding and care money, uh, D L A extended it. But they're, uh, pretty much done with phase one. And so this is city, county, search and rescue, and Garfield County ambulance, um, on this. And so they've got, uh, ambulances are gonna stage right here. They've got two of them. They're both Fords, four fifty and a five fifty. And then they've got, uh, D N R C, uh, they've got city pumper in here. But phase one, just because of the money thing, what we're seeing, so again, as you start talking about money, um, what it was, we have to phase it and go to a, a phasing, so they can at least get the shell built and get vehicles in there and get them undercover. So what we did is we've got turnout gear room right here, and then we've got a shower, toilet, and then two bathrooms here. They actually ended up not even, uh, fitting out the bathrooms. They just built the walls and left it, so we'll fit out the bathroom in phase two. So they do have one operational toilet with a shower, and then this is their future training room. And so we did get that, uh, plumbing wall in there. But, so it's just, it's wide open, uh, right now. And then phase two, uh, I was just in a meeting with them last night. And so they're starting to put the wheels in motion to do phase two, um, through different funding, uh, source. And what that'll do is it'll fit out the rest of the, the guts, the inside of it. So now we have these full pull-through bays for all their equipment. Uh, this is the big training room with a kitchen, and then back here is search and rescue storage. They've got a couple of offices. And then just more storage areas here, and then ambulance storage on this side to, to stage that across, to fill ambulances. And then it's got a mezzanine above the storage, so it's open all the way over. So just giving you an idea, it's about four thousand square feet less than what you're looking for, but just kind of give you the idea of, of phasing and cost, is what I did then. Uh, and there's the, the most recent photos of it. Um, they just moved in. It's substantially complete. And so the contractor's just finishing the final touches on it for the phase one. Um, probably even more similar, um, this is quite a while ago. This is Lewis and Clark County search and rescue facility. It's ten thousand five hundred and fifty-two square feet. So back in two thousand thirteen, it was one point three mil, two thousand fifteen, one point three million dollars. And that cost is about a hundred and twenty-three dollars a square foot, uh, to do that. Uh, similar, this is a sheriff's bay here, and they use that lock for their radio operations, and so they'll fit out vehicles for radios in here. This is the E O C. This is an E O C breakout room, so leadership can get away from the chaos and, and have meetings in here. Just maybe something to think about. So just a breakout room, and then there's an office here separate for them. Uh, restrooms, kitchen. This is that big, uh, washroom I was telling you about. This is a wide open shower room. And this is also a wash bay. And then we've got heated storage and then cold storage. And so they flip-flop summer equipment with winter equipment, uh, when they need to as well. Uh, and then there's a repelling tower right here. So this is trying to use that, uh, to repel, not really tower, it's just the second level they can get up and practice repelling as well. And so that's, uh, that facility, it is, uh, two metal buildings with a wood hybrid, uh, end frame, uh, in between. But if I had to run back through just those costs per square foot, you may have seen them. Uh, Garfield County, it's a hundred and sixty-eight dollars a square foot, uh, on that facility. And as I mentioned on this one, it's three hundred and thirty. And so those numbers have continued to climb over the years, um, as we do. And so then looking at, you know, just by department, we're just trying to put some square foot numbers together. We came to a construction total, subtotal of three million forty-six, seven sixty-five. Figured eighty thousand of site work, not knowing the extent of parking that we need, so we just kind of put that in there. Um, and using soft costs, so that's all the design team fees, that's your geotechnical permitting on one of those. You know, just trying to throw an idea at that. And then subtotal of, of three point four million. And then always want to add in some contingency. At this point, we just said twelve, you know, might be fifteen percent. And then looking at three point eight, which when you back it all out, it ends up being about two hundred and thirty-seven dollars a square foot, uh, to do that. Which actually might be a little bit low, um, based on what we're seeing, but it could be right in there too. And so now, I guess, is, is the time for the design team to just really start getting our heads together with you and, and say, you know, what is the ultimate budget? Two million? If you can supplement that two million, how far do you want to go? Or is two million the number? We work to that and figure out how to make that work, um, and go from there. But I didn't, I didn't want to say, yep, you can do it for two million. Uh, we just want to make sure that we start off where we need to be and then go back from there or add up to.
Where a lot of our thought process came from, Joe found a magazine that had ads in it for buildings.
Yeah.
And, uh, the one that he brought into us, it's eighty by a hundred and fifty with twenty-foot walls.
Yep.
And, and that includes the concrete, the insulation, all buttoned up, and it was just right at seven hundred thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, um, that's all the traders dispatch. Yeah, I get the traders dispatch too. Um.
And we haven't talked to them.
Yeah.
I mean, but, I mean, it's, it's something that would button up the building. And if we change, you know, for more doors and windows and whatever, that cost is gonna change. But the erection and the concrete and everything was with that.
Yep. Yeah.
So I mean, that's something that we were looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I know Bjorn, so I've, I've visited with him before, so yeah, he's a good guy. The, the only issue we run into though is public money. He would have to bid that.
Oh, correct.
Right.
Correct.
And then we'd, so we'd have to get it adjusted to the size that you need and then go out on the streets basically and bid that too. And so he's probably gonna come in at, at a good price, uh, to provide that, if it's what you need. And if he allows you to customize it for your needs as well. So that might be. You get two overhead doors, you get two walk doors and six windows.
Right, and, and we understand that, but I mean, it was a pretty nice, uh.
Yep.
Number that we could kind of go from.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
When you start adjusting and putting more doors and windows, the cost goes.
Yeah.
But isn't this something that you guys will do?
Oh, yeah.
We don't know. It's like, oh no.
Yeah. And so the idea, the idea would be. Yeah, and so our idea would be to get with you and just fine-tune, uh, those spaces, you know, what are the spaces you exactly need? You know, is the E O C large enough or could it be smaller a little bit? You know, I started really honing in on those sizes. And as you saw on the, um, on the Lewis and Clark one here, we got with them and figured out how many people they would have. And so we did a whole series of different arrangements, whether they're using it as a presentation or if they've got a command center set up in there. And so what is that size that you need? And so we would do that same thing, just making sure that, you know, we don't run you out of room. But if you're using too much room, then I'll bring that cost down too. But yeah, just from what we have seen out there, um, this was the, the number that started to filter out, uh, based on that. So, and it's, uh, guaranteed conservative, uh, a little bit. Do we just wanted to be sure that we're covered this early upfront? Cause when we go out to bid and you say, Scott, you said it was gonna be two point eight, and it's actually three point six, how come? It's like, wow.
This was worst-case scenario.
Yeah. Yeah, from what I think.
Happen long.
Yeah, just based on what I've seen.
I think the other thing to think about too, and I don't know if it's been discussed, but just furnishing the building, that, if that's part of the project cost as well. You know, whether you're providing, you know, new desks, new furniture, new computers, I mean, everything starts adding up and it, it can impact that total cost and just want to make sure that that's, cause there's, you know, owner-provided equipment. I'm thinking like the morgue, if there's actually cold storage in that morgue, do you have a cooler that's associated with that? Are you relocating that cooler or is that a brand-new piece of equipment that you're wanting to have as part of this project? That again, may, may impact this total overall cost.
Right.
So those are also things that we need to kind of also be cognizant of, I think, just to make sure that there isn't, you know, we're not getting three ambulances as part of it and that was supposed to be in the two million dollars.
No, I mean, we have existing facilities, but they're pretty old or too small. So that was what prompted this.
Right.
Yeah. But that's something that can be discussed. I mean, if they have to use their equipment that they have right now, except for the morgue. I mean, Melissa's gonna move her whole staff and her whole everything, so they've got what they need. They might get, be able to get something later, hopefully. But Melissa's a guru at grants, so.
Yeah, and back to you, like the morgue, is it just a cooler or we got an autopsy table?
Well, not necessarily an autopsy table per se, but we need a table for.
Yeah.
Exactly. External exam stuff.
Yeah.
Toxicology and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and that would be part of the construction cost. So if you're, if you get the building done and you turn it upside down and shake it, whatever falls out would be what Ethan was talking about, you know, the stuff you'd add to it. Whatever's real property bolted to the building would be part of the construction cost. Good. I think, so just talking about what are the next steps, um, establish that timeline for design to construction? What, what is the goal? I think probably spring next year would be, it sounds like with the cares money, just to give us a good window in case their handler is nine months out. You know, again, that we've seen in the past. Um, if there's any additional funding avenues, uh, that we can help you with. Sounds like, you know, writing grants or whatever. Um, and then just finish those documents for construction and get them up to bid. And if you haven't considered, um, the delivery method, you know, there's design bid build. There's also a general contractor, construction manager.
And I have talked to them a little bit about the G C C M process and, um, you know, with a company like Lawson, how seamless that is.
Yeah.
Can be.
Right. Yeah. It's very nice to have a general contractor on board with about the thirty-five percent set, because the, the design team can then use them, uh, to help us with constructability things. For example, we may have the detail that, that we like that will work well. And they'll say, Scott, you're all wet. We're gonna build it this way. See, might as well just draw it that way.
That usually happens, working with engineers.
Oh, yeah.
Building it this way, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're not right.
Yeah, and, and so it creates that great collaboration early in the project, and then we can, we have a better idea of what the funds are, cause they're continuing to crunch in numbers and saying, they know what their teams cost. They know, we helped them with all the different pieces of, uh, whether it's an air hammer or if it's a rooftop unit. We can help them with that information too, so it's a very seamless back and forth. And that helps us really dial in that cost. And that process, I know Kathy's talked to you, but you interview contractors, uh, they give you kind of an estimate, so we use, we, as a guide, we would say, you know, what's this gonna cost at their interview? And then we can also use that to select them. But then you also still get a bid. So the contractors will be a part of us as we go to the bid and put bid packages together. And so you still have that competitive opportunity with bids of, of subcontractors. And you know, and so really helps to, to keep those costs down and stay in line with those costs as we go too. So if you've not, if you're thinking about that, uh, it's a great, great process, and we can also design bid build it as well.
Can you talk a little bit just for everybody, um, like what are the? I think with the, you know, the G C C M, like you said, you can kind of keep costs in line, where with design bid build, maybe, you know, by the time you get to the end, those costs then can kind of be a surprise.
Right.
Where with the G C C M, you're kind of working with that all along. Is that correct?
Exactly. And then once those bid packages are in, um, you have a guaranteed maximum price. And so the contractor said, this is what it's gonna be, unless we run into an unforeseen or you make changes as the owner. And so that's the only two things are allowed to make that adjustment on that change order. There are times when the design team has done a move seat and we've come to the table. And so there's, it's just a really, it's a give and take to make sure that we still all together meet that guaranteed maximum price. At the very end, um, we always carry a contingency. At the very end, that contingency goes back to you or it can go to the project. So, for example, Garfield County, um, we're left with about a little over eight thousand dollars is, is what's left in the, in the pot. And so the county's elected to take that money, uh, and they'll use it for phase two, so they'll put it in their phase two piece. And so that's above board. Um, it's just, it's a good, very good process. Another thing I really like about the general contractor, construction manager, is that we can create a whole list of wants, after that base number, and we call those supplemental, supplemental pricing. So there's a list of, uh, let's say you wanted a two-story on yours, so that's a supplemental price of seventy thousand or something, for example. And so if that were in the supplemental pricing, and you had seventy-five thousand left in the job, and you said, yeah, we'll get you that. You can just pluck that and go right to it. Whereas if it's a designed bid build, those alternates have to be in order and they have to be taken in that order. So if you really wanted that seventy thousand dollar piece, um, but it was, you had eighty thousand dollars left in the pot, and there was three other things ahead of it that were gonna use it for money, you wouldn't get that. And so the supplemental pricing is nice, cause you can just go through that list and pull anything in, uh, that you want versus going in order. So, yeah, and then construction. Construction is the, is the key to beat that twenty twenty-six grand money. But I mean, that's what we had to get started. If you would like, it would be time, a good time to just maybe take the plan down and just go through some ideas or we can bring it back up on the stream too. Especially since you've made adjustments since. Seth, if you want to.
Is that one on the wall the most current?
No.
Okay. So maybe if you want to, we can just talk through this one.
Yeah, do you guys want me to go make copies of this? Whoops. I don't know, if you can enlarge that call off. Yes, they finished seating two days ago.
So, I mean, one of the things that we can do is look for grant funding to supplement. I think there are D E S grants that would, that this would, you know, this type of a building would qualify.
We need to make sure put that they're involved from the beginning because then, yeah, once there are a lot of grants for D E S.
Something else with the search and rescue.
Yeah.
The color yard. Got a ton of room that we don't use over there.
Well, then we're also gonna be selling our ambulance station too. Over there behind the hospital. Yeah.
Hopefully you get about a million.
I'm not sure search and rescue will pay that, but maybe the hospital will pay part of it. Are we still on?
Just something to think about. Because I would also like to have a place to store vehicles that we don't use very often, just a link to, but. Something that could be.
Well, I talked to Ben yesterday and he said some of their, like their snowmobiles are stored at somebody else's house. You know, they have a little bit of that right now where they're elsewhere. They'd like to bring them all together. But right now, you know, they don't have it, so they do have them stored other places.
What part of northeastern Montana are you from?
Laxville.
R Y Terryville.
Oh, yes, yep.
That is northeastern Montana.
Yeah.
I was just in Freud last weekend.
Oh, yeah, we used to play there, non-conference games, but we used to play there, yeah.
I'm from Oak Point.
Oh, you are, nice.
I just call it God's country, but the people over here don't know what they're talking about.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you. You did well. Uh, need one more?
Sure.
Do you want one more? Yeah, I think so. I think the, one of the main things we did on the hospital is we, or I mean, on the health department is we did make the offices more. Similar in size instead of real kind of long height.
Yes.
And then over on the far side, we kind of got rid of that little hallway area.
Okay, the double, yeah, because you had five hundred and two hundred thirty.
Yeah.
Roughly.
That was probably the main. Yeah, we did that and then this whole section kind of right here.
Kathy, when you were saying that there are some grants that potentially could be gathered. Are they specific to like an ambulance barn or? I mean, would they work in an emergency type building?
I believe so, but I'd need to dig into that a little bit and see what, what there is out there.
Melissa, do they have grants for moving to new space?
Not that I'm aware of. But I mean, I do feel like a lot of like those sort of like furniture costs and, you know, like our vaccine refrigerators and stuff like that. Like we can definitely find grant funding to cover those things.
Well, and through our E M P G grant, that's how we bought all the equipment over at the other E O C. Like the table and all the chairs, and I think we can do that again.
Yeah.
Once it's operational or once it's built, then I think we can put furniture in it through E M P G.
I think the final fine tuning of the equipment, the office space, that stuff, I think that's something that we can do as we go.
Yeah.
I really do.
Yeah.
But you also have to think about, you know, the utilities. I mean, I've already thought, okay, it's gonna go by square footage because you've got, you know, we have separate funding. So we, the general fund can't fund this. Then you're gonna have to think of custodial, you're gonna have to think of, I mean, there's some other costs that are gonna be a permanent cost for you.
So are you thinking for utilities, it'll be divided by department?
By square footage, I think that's the only way I'm, I'm sitting here thinking that because it's like, wow, how am I gonna do that?
Well, not only square footage, but usage too, because like our ambulance bay, we're not gonna use probably as much electricity as they are, but our square footage is more.
But you're still gonna probably have the same, well, that's just something to think about. I mean, this is stuff that.
Yeah.
We have to think about.
Right.
Not right now.
So can we just pick a department and start, maybe just throw in some ideas out? Melissa, wanna start with you on?
Sure.
So do you, I guess my first question is, when you invite the public in, is there only a certain spot they can go? Would you have kind of like a back office area?
Um, so I think we generally would prefer one public entrance. Um, although I feel like there, there potentially we could have a second staff entrance if that would make sense. But for us, it's easier to have people come in one place so they can check in at the front desk.
Right, okay. And they cannot go past a certain location? So you've got the lab here.
Yeah.
And you would invite people in for shots back into the lab?
Yeah, I mean, potentially we would have public coming into every one of the offices, depending on which program staff person they'd be visiting with. Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have to really create a deep arc line between staff and public then?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Is that lab gonna serve the Lord or anything?
Yeah, so you'd have a check in, is that this office right here?
I think it's actually this one right here, but, yeah.
Okay, there's another window right there.
Okay. And then do you have a, do you foresee a need for future expansion? Do you have more?
I mean, I think this would last us for a while. I think one of the things that we've talked about is co-location with other services such as mental health or even like Office of Public Assistance kind of thing could be using some of this space also. But this would, this would fit our current staff and give us probably a little bit of room to grow, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, yeah, so office layout looks good. You've got a lounge room in there, so. We'll get that. Capture. And I did grow it just a little bit in order to, I mean, again, just get that. Corridor through there and make that split just for exiting. And we'll adjust that as we do a code review and just make sure that it was a good, just simple start. That's what we'd have to do to break that down. Um, how about, let's just work around. Let's go backwards, how about E O C? Any adjustments? I'm just gonna make those vestibules just a touch larger.
I mean, I see that room as not only acting as the E O C, but I think a county meeting room. And I think that's a much needed facility for the county as far as extra training or.
Yeah.
I mean, even the health department using it for shock clinics or edu, yeah. I mean, I just, I see that room being. Used a ton for different things. Um, we talked about, you know, one great big huge room, but there's also dividers that eventually we could get to where you could make it into smaller rooms. I know for the E O C, you mentioned, you know, having a place for the. Leadership to break out and that was kind of back here into this back SARS training room, the same thing. So I think leaving it as large as possible to accommodate a wide variety of uses is gonna be. Ideal.
Okay.
And I think if, yeah. If long term you ever needed to adjust that, you could always put more office space in there or something, you know.
Okay. Not sized, I mean, as a backup polling place or anything like that?
Oh, it is, yeah, that will be where they're polling elections places, yes. Yeah, it's gonna be used for a lot. And I think a lot more than we can envision it's gonna be used for.
Okay, so when we talk about it as an E O C, we'd wanna have, just talk about monitors all around the room probably so we could have it?
It's probably sometime, yeah, eventually, I don't think that's anything that we would put in.
Okay.
To begin with, I think that would be long term, you know, with some of our grant money and we have excess funds at the end of our grant cycle, then purchasing those. But yeah, I think eventually we would have monitors of some sorts. And the biggest thing with that room is probably having the acoustics.
Yep.
A large room, if it's a tall ceiling, which is kind of what we originally said. That it would be an open floor plan with the ceiling, I think that needs to really be looked at because. A room that, we have a big training room in Fairfield and the acoustics are horrible.
Okay.
So that's our alternate E O C in Fairfield. Just making sure that the acoustics are good, but that could be long term too.
We would have acoustics on our group, our team, and hell, no, we're fortunate that we have two in the state and one of them.
Okay.
And Sean's about six foot fourteen, so. He can get up there and get the sound, so.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. And so, yes, good scene, high ceiling. Yeah, that, I like that room. That'll be very good. And then the kitchen that goes right off it, the server of the kitchen.
Yeah.
Do you? To be, I guess, is there any concern as a kitchen to be disruptible when something's happening here? Do you wanna back serve it with?
That's very possible and I think, not necessarily the ambulance, but on the new floor plan, kind of right where there, there's a wash bay, all that area there. On the new, new plan. Um, it's to maybe, because there's a little bit of space or maybe putting a door there to go into the kitchen right there. To where people could kind of go around the meeting room and then back into the kitchen that way. But I don't see as far as EMS, we'll have our own fridge and probably microwave in the ambulance bay. So we probably wouldn't be using it. I'm guessing you guys would have a refrigerator or maybe a microwave in your office. So as far as actually using the kitchen, the, the agencies that are there, that's their place of work, probably wouldn't be using the kitchen a whole lot. I, I couldn't, I mean, occasionally maybe, but I don't think.
It's mostly set up to serve this.
It is, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then your storage. Keep that as central as we can to the ambulances. We figure about twenty five feet for an ambulance and then I like to do ten feet behind it.
Mm-hmm.
Just to get pots in and out.
Yep.
Get things staged and back in the ambulance.
Yep.
Just one more quick thing. If that is gonna operate as a kitchen, do you guys have any concerns about like, I guess, I don't know how much food is entering that kitchen, but like loading it off of trucks?
Oh, I don't think, no, I don't think so. I think it can come straight through from.
What about that soup kitchen?
Long term.
Couldn't help myself, Dave.
And as far as the D E S storage, that ultimately, I think it's gonna be warmed by the building around it. It's basically cold storage for, you know, a point of distribution as far as if we have to have excess water or blankets or any of that kind of stuff. We have a trailer right now. It's not gonna be housed in there, but the trailer has a lot of excess P P E from, left from COVID. So we might have that here and being able to dispense it right out of there, so versus the trailer.
So not a vehicle per se in there?
No, I don't, no, I don't think so, no. We have a garage door to open because it'll be putting pallets and stuff in there, but no, no vehicles would be housed in there.
And I just ask that for vehicle exhaust?
Yep, no. Nope.
Good, how about if we just go and continue on to ambulance then? Fully, you've got three, three bays, we'll do twelve by twelve doors. What are your ambulances right now?
Um, there's a four fifty and then a van type, so we don't have the hugest one here, but. It preps for it, but one's a four, four wheel drive and the other one's the van type. And then we have a suburban, so that one would be parked in there too.
Okay. So E three fifty and F four fifty, okay. Do you ever just foresee anything more than the three units? We try to get one bigger?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I really don't think so. There was talk years ago when there was a question kind of on the hospital, whether we'd ever go to a full time. I don't, I don't see us in the near future going to a full time service, so I don't think so. If we, I think that's enough space if we ever did get three full size ambulances, that would work.
Okay, yep.
And the other communities in the county do have ambulances.
Yeah, this is one of five.
Everything's not running.
Oh, sure, okay. So Dutton Power.
Fairfield. And then Waco U and Pendrake.
Okay. Um, let's bounce up to that maintenance shop. Is that strictly for the building maintenance or is that just county maintenance in general?
County general.
Okay. Okay. As though that's lawn tractors and just smaller stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. How about up to search and rescue? That bay is for equipment that's for bus.
I think mainly their bus, they have, you know, I mean, I think they'd like to house them all together, but it's just probably not feasible in the space that we have. But, you know, they have four wethers, they have snowmobiles, they have a boat, they, they have a lot of equipment. But I think it was mainly for their bus and their communications, you know, they have a lot of radios that are kind of spread out here and there and. Just that kind of stuff.
When you mentioned communications, I'm thinking search and rescue, is that gonna be all served services for that provided from the space, like antenna?
No, I'm thinking just like the portable radios type thing. We'll, we'll go through the sheriff's dispatch for, for true communication. But they just have some extra radios that are sitting there.
Incentive command post, basically, and then have radios and that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nope.
And I think their door was a sixteen foot door.
Okay.
Approximately, they, they wanted as big as they possibly could and that amount of space. And I think they came up with a sixteen foot door.
Okay.
You probably want to go at least twelve.
Oh, yeah, I would say.
Not fourteen.
Yep, I agree. Um, what about, is there any merit to having just a door on this backside, another overhead door, just so they can stack?
Yeah, we, if we're in line with the sheriff's office, we're pretty close to the railroad and we wanna stay. I mean, I think locking doors are fine, but we don't wanna push the lock. And there's a screen right there, so the search and rescue had approached us with that idea and it makes it.
Okay. Okay, um, are we good on search and rescue for their bay? So how about into that, the training room, search and rescue room?
I think that's just same thing, just kind of a blank training room for search and rescue and EMS to use, especially if something big is going on in the E O C where they can still have. Where they can still have meetings and/or if there's something else, we have a incident, you can take a family or something in that specific room that is kind of sheltered from the rest of the people.
Right, okay. Same thing, someone had talked about just getting monitors on the walls, but at least have conduit and power.
Yeah.
Around, so that in the future you could just add.
Yeah.
Your sixty-inch flat screens or whatever.
I think there's a specific spec, which I'm sure you guys know, when you build an E O C, how many electrical outlets do you need? How many phone outlets do you need or phone hookup? I mean, all that kind of stuff. We wanna make sure all that was in there, although we don't have phones. We don't use landline phones like we used to in our E O Cs. It's a lot of a cell, cell service, so.
Yeah, and, and then we'd have a certain number of those on the generator or all of them in that room, for example.
Yeah.
So they could be on the generator.
Yep, yep.
How was the E O C and what does search and rescue train?
Yeah. Um, how about let's jump into the core and talk about bathrooms? So administrative rules of Montana dictate what we need for restroom count for toilet count, so we'll follow that. But as a guide, you've got a great start here. Looks like just two shower rooms with toilets in them. And we'll, we'll have those. You don't do any U A's, do you?
We don't.
The hospital just would do that, right?
Yeah. But we do have in this plan a bathroom specifically in the health department, which I feel like is valuable in case something is happening in the E O C, so we're not, puck isn't getting in the way.
Does that one have a shower or anything?
It does not, no, no.
And because of the training room size, we might have to upsize or add just a couple. You've got one bathroom in there now. We might need to do a second one.
In where?
Because of the size of your training.
Oh, with three bathrooms?
Yeah, we might need another toilet room.
So you'd need four of them?
Yeah, we might. So we'll, we'll check that just to be sure. Um, mechanical, the mechanical room will probably, two, two options. We could have the one down low, which would be great for a janitor. I don't know if each group wants their own janitor closet or if just one central one is good enough to serve everything. By code, you don't need, one will do it.
I would think that, I mean, I think we will have kind of our own spot in the ambulance bay for, we'll have our own mops and all that kind of stuff in there. So that I was kind of thinking more for like the E O C and the training area and the bathrooms. I don't know about you guys, if you could?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could probably figure out in other existing storage where to keep cleaning supplies or, I mean, if it's, you know, possible to keep it in there, I guess, for, I think we're currently props cleaned every week, so, yeah, I mean, either way, I think we'd be fine. Doesn't take up too much space.
Yeah. I think the utility, that was more for like your boiler and all that kind of stuff is where we were gonna, that's what that was.
Yep. And I like how you're thinking, but Ethan's probably gonna say, no, he needs more.
We figured, and you want it in the middle and you want as much space to it now.
But we could also take it high.
Yeah.
So we could upstairs with it.
Okay.
I, we can talk systems to mechanical systems for as far as what you wanna go with, but I mean, a building this size, I'm not sure if you want, if you want a boiler, but there's, yeah.
You can tell us.
What are your thoughts?
I'm, I'm thinking you're more likely, I mean, the biggest concern I think I have is cooling. What you're looking at for, if you are gonna cool a building, the whole building, part of the building, what does that look like? If you're doing heating only, it does make sense to maybe go with that, but the other thing that we run into now with the, the new code of the state of Montana is ventilation required throughout the building. So if you're just doing where you gain heat, that doesn't address ventilation. So you can't get away with some natural ventilation for very few types of spaces, but with all of these interior spaces and large median areas, you're gonna have to have a mechanical system providing ventilation for those spaces. So I'm thinking, you know, maybe you can get away with a couple smaller air handling units, maybe, or if you go with one large unit, if you, that's the other part I'm kind of talking with Scott too. You know, if you go roof mounted, then you have to take into structural account. If it is one large unit, that's a lot harder to distribute that weight over the structural area. If you go with smaller units, it's a little bit easier, but you go smaller units, cost is a little bit higher than, rather than one single unit. But I think my feeling is it's probably add some smaller rooftop units. Scott doesn't like them, cause obviously everybody can see them. They're not.
What about heat pumps?
We could do something with heat pumps. I just don't know. I mean, the piping component of a mechanical system just adds so much cost. So if you're, if you've already got the ductwork, it makes sense to kind of keep all of that utility kind of centralized to a rooftop unit or some sort of air handling unit. If you're looking at cooling, you have something, something that's gotta be outside, whether it's a chiller or condensing unit or whatever it is. So those are kind of some of the things I have, have thought of, I guess. I don't know if you guys have thought more along the lines of what you're hoping to see or, you know, the ambulance bays and the search and rescue, I think heating those spaces will be fairly easy with like some infrared tube heaters. But then you also are trying to mix, you know, different uses and you don't want, you know, smells coming from the kitchen going over to the health department. So there's definitely gonna be a balancing act with that. And I think Scott and I need to talk more about when we start doing the code analysis with just how that fire separation works and if we are gonna sprinkle the building, cause that'll also drive that mechanical system as well. But those are kind of just some of the things I've been thinking, looking at in this plan and how we're gonna go about it. But, but yeah, the, the kitchen might be the one thing that probably scares me the most, I think, from a mechanical side, but those are, can be easy, can be more difficult than they need to be.
Would we call it a warming kitchen, so we wouldn't have to do a hood?
Right, yeah. So that would definitely, that would help a lot, I think.
You're not gonna do french fries or anything?
No, and I, I don't, I mean, it's a lot of kind of just prep work there. Most everything is cooked. Like our, our facility in Fairfield has a beautiful kitchen. And I don't think the oven's been used three times in ten years. And if it's used for anything, it's to warm heat to back up or to warm a plate of lasagna or something. It's not really used as a full kitchen.
Okay. But you're thinking some sort of maybe induction oven or?
I would imagine there would be an oven there. I mean, just especially for warming purposes.
We're not gonna have a full grill line?
I don't think so, no. I don't think so, no. I wouldn't, that's my thought. I don't think so.
A warming kitchen sounds good.
Yeah, so warming kitchen is a, or a prep kitchen would be great.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so like just basically a residential stove?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, this isn't, we're not catering anything.
No.
Although I was asked if there was a catering, you know, Fairfield has that catering kitchen where you can rent it to go in and I was asked if that was the case here. And I'm like, nope.
Insurance grounds on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Ethan, anything more on, I mean, if we set everything upstairs. So this would be the strip that's got the two-story storage, right? Is that the idea?
No, yep, that's what it would do, except for the search and rescue. Yeah, so it's kind of that L right there. In, yeah. If we did put a ceiling on the E O C, then you could actually extend it all the way down to cover the kitchen and the, yeah.
Okay.
Anything for I T related? Or is that all gonna kind of centralize to each individual component? Or there'll be essential I T closet sorts?
I would assume you guys will have your own router and Wi-Fi.
Yeah, I think that's probably easiest.
And I, it would be nice if there was something in the E O C that was separate from them that you could hook up to the internet that was, I would assume we'll have some type of router or cellphone booster or something in there like we do in Fairfield. And EMS doesn't use that much excess Wi-Fi. I mean, we could probably bounce off of this one unless we had a big event and then we'd have to bring in some sort of portable one or something, but, yeah. But I would think you guys would want yours separate.
Yeah, I imagine so. I mean.
Yeah. Just in case there was a big event, we wouldn't wanna pull, try to combine.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're mostly like hardwired into our offices. We do use a little bit of Wi-Fi and I don't know if it would be preferable to have just building-wide, you know, Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
But I think it could be set up either way.
Three rivers, big scare for most of that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, just back to mechanical, we talked a little bit about radiant floor heat, or you did. If you, what are your thoughts on providing? So at Garfield County, we did design radiant floor heat in and it pulled it just because of cost.
Can you run the cooling through that also?
No.
That's my concern is just, there's so many different offices and things in there with the floor heat. And we talked about this earlier. I just, to me, it's not a good building for floor heat, just because you can't distribute the air the way you need to for the different offices for your department, which you're gonna be there all the time. So some of this other stuff, I think, I just, I just don't see it being a good situation for floor heat. They just didn't agree with me, but.
Well, that's like the ambulance bay. That doesn't.
No, I'm just case finding why you'd hear.
Yes.
The ambulance bay does not really need, needs to be heated just above floor, above freezing. The little office, you could have a little heater in there that was just, you know, some very simple heating unit in there. Yeah, a little milk heater, versus they're gonna need heat all the time.
Right.
Same thing with search and rescue. They, they're not gonna necessarily need heat. They can come in and turn it up when they have a meeting, but they're not there ever.
Yeah, and that's exactly kind of what, you know, mechanical system have in those different zones, like you were saying. That's very important with, you know, making sure that, you know, whatever unit is serving this space, the thermostat for it isn't in the ambulance bay. So you have to walk all over the ambulance bay to turn the heat up or.
Yeah.
Making, making sure that it's being adjusted for usage, cause when most of the building or seventy-five percent of the building's unoccupied, you can save a lot of utility costs by having it set up that way, so that you're not heating the ambulance bay when nobody's in there.
Yeah. Same thing with the E O C. You're not gonna have to have that heated unless there's something going on.
And yeah, as Ethan mentioned, you'll find that you'll need to go more with a cooling mode in there than probably heating, cause it'll get pretty intense at times.
It's like the one in Fairfield. It actually feels like there's air, if we keep those windows shade, it actually feels like there's air conditioner in the summer, even when it's eighty degrees outside. It's very well insulated, so it keeps pretty cool.
Then you got the, all the trees on the south side of your building.
Yeah, yeah.
Summer time.
Mm-hmm. Cause we don't have air conditioning in there, in the one in Fairfield. It's just, we have two little heaters on the wall and that's it.
I think that goes back to my calling about ventilation. So ventilation, and I don't know if you ever knew those, ventilation is basically outside air. So bringing in air from the outside mechanically provide that fresh air into the space. So the issue would be is, yeah, it's eighty degrees outside, but we're, we're just pumping that space full of hot air.
Yeah.
And it's just kind of, because codes require us to do that, so that you're not getting a built-up level of just people's breathing, their CO2 and those are kind of just, yeah.
Yeah.
I think I'd feel a little bit more comfortable, I think, with having cooling for that space just so that you guys have it. And from a mechanical standpoint, it's not, not a huge cost from, as long as the system's kind of, the basis of that system is kind of allowing for that to be added. But, you know, going with a radiant heat floor for that emergency operation center, if we do that and we're stuck with that and all of a sudden down the road, you say, oh, we really need to add cooling, you're adding a whole separate unit to provide cooling for that. And that, that cost for that is a lot larger than it would be if, say, you did something where you were kind of planning for it in the future now and we had a system kind of in place for it. It'd be a lot easier to accommodate for that.
Okay. What about sheriff stepped out, but does anybody know about the morgue? So we know we have a freezer, a cooler in there, should say freezer, but a cooler.
Same thing.
Yeah. And he did talk about exam table. And so we can get that in there.
And he wanted to sink in water.
Yep. Yeah. And then storage, so we'd have rack storage for.
Yeah, and I think he said he was gonna have storage all the way around the cabinets. Cabinets. And this, the storage room right there, I guess, technically, if that had to be a bathroom, we could probably cut down into that storage, cause he does have a whole bunch of storage, but that was kind of, first we were gonna use it for elections, then we didn't, we, then we decided we weren't gonna use it for that. So then we kind of just turned it into storage for them. So that might be a, a option there.
Okay.
And then that other storage, that long, the rectangular one was kind of cleaning storage, the, yeah, that one was gonna be like your utility for your cleaning, so that, you know, it's close enough to the health department. If they needed to store it there, it could be. So any of those probably can be altered some, especially if maintenance thinks they need, need a bigger utility room.
And then on the sheriff's bay, is that a couple vehicles in there or?
Just their corner vehicle, I believe. Just their suburban, it's a suburban.
Yep, I saw that out there.
Yep. And then double doors to go directly into the morgue area centered in the middle.
Good. So what else are we missing?
One point four million bucks. I mean, that's, that's the eight hundred pound grill in the room to me, cause our maximum, we, we have been trying to accumulate this money and we were, I think we're right at two point four. If we use everything we've got.
Okay.
And we are not gonna go out to the taxpayers for levy and I really don't wanna get along.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll just work out, we'll start working up plans to see what we can fine-tune and how to capture as much as we can on the program.
And I'm probably not gonna make any friends here, but if, if I had to choose between a building with E O C and that search and rescue room or no building at all, I, to me, that might be an option. And I know you're not gonna be happy about that, but.
The E O C?
The E O C and the search and rescue, I mean, that's almost a third of the building.
Well, if you, if you eliminate the search and rescue, and even if you don't think that old building can bring very bad for anything, you think it's just gonna crumble?
No, it's, it's.
It's really all had it.
But I, I mean, just the, the center portion of that building, if you still gave the search and rescue their storage and eliminated the middle of the building and shrunk it down, I mean, I don't, I don't see any one point four million bucks dropping in our laps. And I'm, we're seriously not gonna go out for a levy on this building. So I know, but what's your thoughts about that?
Well, I just, the E O C, calling it an E O C, there's funding out there available for that. It's a meeting room or a multi-purpose room for the entire county, which I see as a huge need. I see a huge need for elections.
That would be the most used room in the building, except for the health department. I agree.
Yeah, so we have an E O C and we have a really nice alternate E O C, but there is funding when you start using it as an E O C.
Funding to assist with the construction?
No, not construction. I think it's, it would kind of be more of the internet. I mean, we missed out on the homeland security grant, grant. But I mean, there's always homeland security in the future, but not, not this go-around. But there are, there are funding sources out there for. But not, not this go around, but there are, there are funding sources out there for it, but, um, yeah, I mean, I, I worry more about or, or can, you know, I mean, the uses that it would be used besides an E O C. Which is a need of the counties.
Yep, I agree.
Yes.
And I also.
But I get it. I get it.
I think a good, and what we've done in the past is we'll put together a plan, uh, have you look it over, see if you like it, um, create elevations, all that, and then we'll pick a couple contractors and say, hey, would you mind taking a look at this and see what you think?
Sure.
The cost would be and how close we are to what we think it would be and then we can go from there. And just cause, again, they're in that every day and they know what their crews cost and all that, we're just taking.
And you guys worked with those people all the time where you know them and they know you, so.
And I think phasing this out is, is the prime way to go, you know, I mean, moving into an ambulance bay, once the exterior is, is complete, is pretty minimal, I mean, we, it's, our construction is the exterior for the most part and then creating all the interior, you know, as time goes on, same thing with you guys, you guys could be completed, but you need your whole, your whole portion needs to be cleaned, completed all at once, they can't really move in partway through. So, and then of course, your bathrooms and stuff like that, if anybody's moving in the building, you're gonna need those. So, but as far as the other stuff, even, even, I mean, the kitchen can be a empty room, you know, just the get your walls up type thing. Cause kitchens always cost a lot, you know.
The thing that I see is, you're always gonna need space, so building it as big as you can first time, even if a lot of the interior isn't finished, or you could do that as you go.
Yeah.
Cause, I mean, even adding on to a building is never perfect.
Right.
Well, and the, the way this plan, there isn't, there isn't an easy way to add on to this building, any way you slice it, you can't really add on to it.
Yep. Yeah, but it, uh, just like what Garfield County did, and I'll, I'll run to that. It's the same, same thing you're talking about where this is all just wide open and this will always be a wide open space, this will always be wide open. Right now, that inside core is pretty much open until phase two shows up, they can finish fitting it out. And so if I go back to your plan. Uh, this gets built out from Melissa and then this core gets built out. And then the rest could just be dividing walls and depth, you talked about, still back to ambulances in and.
Yeah.
If you have to get a couple storage sheds or something to put stuff in for the meantime.
Right.
If you've got something or some lockers, you can do that. And we just get those devising walls in, enough that we have our zoning for heating and cooling. Take care of things in the meantime. So the core and the shell would definitely go, uh, number one, and then your space would have to go with the core and shell, it sounds like.
Probably, I mean, if we were gonna move into it, yep.
Okay. What else are we missing?
So did you expand, to put that corridor in, did you expand the whole building eight, five feet, so it's eighty-five by one fifty then?
Yeah, and if we can adjust stuff to go back, if we can, we could try and get that five feet back internally. I mean, back to, and what really, what really grew, what really grew is we slid the ambulance bay down, give that, and it's, help department down.
Right.
You said you didn't need anything and you were willing to fork over everything for the cost so the rest of us could have.
I tried to knock him out of that.
Yeah, they don't realize that, they're the only ones in here without a gun.
Got a cash cooler.
We got the cooler and your table.
Yep, um, actually the table will be in the middle of the room.
Okay.
And I'd like to have a floor drain.
Yep.
The underneath, in the center of the room.
Okay.
And then the, uh, uh.
Your suburban.
Yeah, suburban goes in there and then also have a drain for, they have a sump and a, and a drain.
Yep, and we'll have that, goes out to an oil separator. Which, yeah, everything else will be on that too. Um, on your table, do you want just the table or do you want, it's got the head, so we've, we've done a couple units where.
I want a table you can walk all the way around.
Okay.
I got one of those up in storage, Keith.
I'll just mark one in. And then just cabinetry on probably two of the walls. The other thing would be, and that's down the road, that if any, any windows would be up six, six feet plus, so six and a half. Just so we don't have potential leaky loose or whatever.
Yeah, and we do a heavy tint on them too.
Yeah.
That would be good.
How many person cooling cabinet do you need?
Most time we need one, but I'd like to have three.
Okay. Yeah, and we can, we'll put a rack system in there.
Yeah, that's right, I've, I've looked at them and they have various, you know, so. And actually, depending on room-wise, I'm not too sure the cooler wouldn't be as well off out in the, in the, uh, bay.
How big is that bay?
Hmm?
How big is that bay?
Um, thirty-six?
Thirty-six by twenty-two, thirty.
Thirty-four.
Thirty point eight by twenty-two.
Thirty-seven?
Yeah. Thirty, it's thirty point eight, thirty-two. And I think putting that corridor over there would then eliminate the, the, the search and rescue to have that storage, cause it'd be across the hallway. So maybe even moving that stairs and the search and rescue storage kind of a different way or something like that.
Yeah, we'll finesse that so they do get that storage in their bay. Um, and then the stairs, so I moved it, so these green ones would be their stairs.
Okay.
Cause ultimately I'd like to do is make sure we can get people right out.
Yeah.
One has to for sure and the second one may just be able to communicate, but we just have to run our exit distances.
And then I was talking, uh, thinking, and I guess it's interior stuff, but considering from the morgue, if should, there gotta be a, a route to get out of there, other than through these doors, should you have a fire, a vehicle fire in the, in the bay, there's gonna be another way to get out, so, we had talked about putting a door into this.
There was the storage.
Storage facility, yeah, through that storage facility to be able to get into that.
Yeah, and although not ideal, in essence, if you choose another door to secure, straight out would be best, just straight out into here.
I guess one thing I'm seeing too is we had talked about, so up above, using that as additional storage and that is something the health department would access, but if this, but we, I don't believe we would intend to have access to this space to get to that staircase.
Yeah, it would be off this corridor here, yep.
And that would be from my office, would there be a door here then too, or?
Yeah.
There'd be a door going out, yeah.
Yeah, we definitely figure out, you don't have an office here, or are you in here, do you?
No.
Okay. So we don't have an office for you.
We just need to separate the coroner bay from their access to the, and, and have our own access on.
That also be able to get us there, yeah.
Are you keeping evidence up there?
No.
Okay, that's all in your facility now, okay.
Well, maybe once we do a little reworking with the sizes of these, maybe some of that can scrounge down, you can maybe have one office for you or whatever.
Yep.
I don't know. That, that, I don't foresee needing an office per se, we can stick a desk in the corner of the morgue, if we have to. Counter top would be more important than the desk.
Was there reasoning on this, on the health department side for the wide corridor, you know, offices?
It's a, a waiting area as well.
Okay. I was just thinking that that's, seems like a very large open space, maybe there's a way we can, or Scott can minimize that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it has to necessarily be that long, if there was a shortened waiting area and a shorter corridor, that's definitely something we could work with.
Okay. Do you have, uh, just typical concerns of people waiting outside? I mean, we definitely, on the inside, so all our offices would be private.
Right, um, yeah, I, less so if, because if we have all of these separate offices, we're able to close to residence, yeah, not as much of a concern.
Okay.
I, I have a question. If we build the metal structure, the shell, that's virtually one cost, okay? So then, these different departments can be, probably bid besides extra.
You could do, it would be better to do, um, do the core and shell in as much inside as you could.
Right.
Uh, just based on mobilizing a contractor, and so while they're onsite, capture them.
Sure.
Cause anytime they have to re-mob or if you have a different group coming in. Um, what I'd advise against is to have somebody build the shell and then somebody else come in and do the inside at the same time. Cause then they'll get into finger pointing about issues and so. If you do just the shell and let's say Melissa's department has your base and then we just build the main dividing walls and then that's the, that's the first piece that gets done.
Sure.
And then maybe the next year or under different grant money, come and finish the rest of it out. Do you? Yeah?
Okay. But the biggest thing that I guess I'm concerned about is the sewer and the water and everything is in the concrete.
Yep, exactly.
Prior to.
Oh, absolutely.
Everybody walking away.
Yep, and that's exactly what we did with, with Garfield County is you'll, you walk through there, you'll see stubs up.
Yep.
And everything, so all the underslab is done and ready to go.
You just can't change your mind.
That never happens.
Wow, right, yeah. Yep. Good, what other questions do you have, does anybody have?
I think we've talked about pretty much everything, you know, that would give us the deal with cost.
Yep, absolutely.
We can keep the money down, you know, and tweak things and, you know, look for ways to save here and there.
Right.
That's the biggest deal right now.
Yeah.
Aren't you good?
Yes.
Yep. Well, that's, I think a great next step for us is just to get together as a team and.
Right.
Take these documents and get it into a drawing, get some looks, look at it and get it back to you.
Kathy, you can come back next week if it rains.
Okay. Every time I come, it rains or snows.
Two weeks, you never know.
We can find your house.
Yeah, I didn't get everybody's last name. Scott has one, I've got Kathy's info and Ethan, you're with?
Uh, associate construction engineer.
Do you have one?
I do.
And Melody needs one too, so I will. Okay.
I've got one of Scott's.
You got Scott's, you just need your defense, okay. And so, are you with?
I must.
What was your last name?
Marty, V as in Victor A R T Y. Marty with a D.
Got it, thank you.
Good, well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in on Friday.
Yeah.
Well.
When can we expect another meeting or?
It's probably gonna take us a couple of weeks to get, a couple, three, in that range to.
So it's end of June, sort of?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be good to get. Yeah, do you think Kathy would be?
Yeah, I think that works for us.
Okay.
I think our part on this is pretty minimal compared to what Slay's doing, um, we definitely have our tasks, but, and Robbie and I can start sleuthing out some potential grants, see what's out there, and the timing of those is what they require, so that'll be on our plate too.
Yeah, good.
Yeah. We'll start looking for that one point four million.
Should I make stand though?
I don't, yeah, Gilmore greater.
Yeah.
I agree. I, I'm just simply asking, you know, he never thinks I'm funny, especially when I'm supposed to budget time, he really doesn't like that.
See, our E M P D will have reverted funds coming up here, like in June, there'll be a grant week in a cycle for reverted funds, but I don't think the Farnah will long to purchase anything for it. We'll think through it though.
And I think the government's done supplying us with all the interesting ways that they have supplied us. The L E T C F ones are the last and we're using most funding on all this too, and I don't think we even get the second half until November.
October.
October, okay, so, but those are already figured in.
It's been taken away.
Just wait for the next pandemic.
Oh, Melissa, yeah.
Really need to have a health department bite out.
Uh, anybody have any other questions for Scott or Kathy or?
And Scott, you'll email me? Or give it to Kathy?
When I get back, yeah, I'll send the ca, I'll just send you Kathy.
Yeah, I can distribute it out, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, we certainly thank everybody that were participating and look forward to the next meeting.
Yeah, I think this was good.
Grab donuts.
Thank you all.
Seriously, for the road, you gotta take some, there's more waters if you need water.
Thank you.